I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Lexington County School District Three Board of Trustees Regular Monthly Meeting. It's Tuesday, May the 10th, 2022, 6:00 PM. We are at the district office. Let the meeting minutes show that we have Ms. Carey on speakerphone tonight. Joining us will be a teleconference, and Ms. Derrick is absent tonight. Takes us on to our Section 1.2, our Pledge of Allegiance, and this followed by a prayer by one of our students, Ms. Gonzalez.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, we came to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in a mindful discussion as we grow closer as a community. Amen.
Next is Section 1.4, Approval of Our Agenda. Fellow Board members, you have had a chance to look at the agenda, and without objection, we will approve them as presented. Hearing no objection, the agenda is approved as presented. Section 1.5 is Approval of Our Meeting Minutes from April 19th, the regular board meeting, and as well, without any objection, we will approve them as well. Hearing no objection, the meeting minutes for April 19th, 2022, are approved. Takes us to Section 2, our Consent Items. First up, 2.1 is our Financial Report by Ms. Angela Roden.
Hello, good evening. You received your information in your packet. If you go to your cash balance statement for the month, you'll see that we received the Homestead money. That's a portion of it. We got the Saluda portion in May, so you'll see that portion in next month. We just got this one a little early. That's noteworthy. And then the end of the quarter, May 31st, I started claiming federal funds, so you'll see an increase in our federal collections for the month of April when it was paid. Do you have any specific questions about your revenues and expenditure statements for this month? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roden. Next is Section 2.2, our Superintendent's Report by Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you. I've got lots of wonderful things that have occurred over the past three weeks to share. First of all, I want to start off with our Special Olympics that was held this past Friday. We had over 136 students participate, and I will have to say that, for me, that has been one of the highlights of the entire year. If you've got to watch our students and the smiles on their face, it was quite an event. So I just want to thank our Angie Michaud, Ginger Harmon, and Karen Morell, and all of our special ed teachers, and assistants, and volunteers. It was a wonderful time, and it was a little iffy at first with the weather, but we were able to complete the entire event, and I think all the students were happy and very tired when it was over with. Last week, we had 16 students from the high school that graduated from Midland Tech on May the 4th. We had 10 students earn a General Studies certificate and six earn an Associate Arts in General Studies. And also on May the 4th, that was a really good day for our students and our teachers. On May the 4th, we got to celebrate with Andrew Derrick, our Teacher of the Year, as we were able to attend the South Carolina Teacher of the Year Gala, and so that we had an opportunity to honor Ms. Derrick and celebrate all that she has accomplished. Unfortunately, she's here tonight, retiring, but I'm going to ask you one more time, would you like to reconsider? So you think about that while you're sitting there. If you got to attend Frozen Junior Performance on April the 30th, you were in for quite a treat. That was a wonderful performance. Our students did so well and so proud of the work that they did to perform. And finally got to do that after COVID, they put that on pause, and Christian Pugh just did a wonderful job directing, so we're really proud of the work that they did. On Tuesday, May the 3rd, ROTC hosted their Annual Awards Day Program, and just lots and lots of students that we were able to recognize and honor for their leadership, achievement, and service. Keeping with other honors, on April the 28th, we had 43 seniors that were recognized by the Batesburg-Leesville Chamber of Commerce and Midland Technical College who are on track to be 2022 honor graduates. Now, I say they're on track, but they haven't finished yet, so we don't want them stopping, but they are right now, if they continue in the path they're on, they will be honor graduates this year. And I'd like to thank Mike Taylor, Tom Ledbetter, and Rosemary Nolton for their work. Our primary school hosted a fun run on April the 20th. It was sponsored by the South Carolina Alliance for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, and they were able to raise over $4,000 for charitable events, including Relay for Life. Our band participated in solo ensemble, and we had 13 students that received either excellent or superior ratings, and that was back on April the 22nd and 23rd. Additional honors for our high school students, we had the Academic Letter Ceremony last Thursday, where we had 170 students who were recognized for earning either their first-time academic letter, or second or third, or even fourth academic letter. You had to end the first semester with a 3.75 chemistry GPA or greater. Our boys tennis team, where we celebrate because they were crowned 2022 Region Champions, Hollis Roof was named the 2022 Region Three Boys Tennis Player of the Year, and William Ash was named Coach of the Year. So congratulations to Hollis and Coach Ash. Heard just a little while ago that our boys golf teams made the state championship, so with our golf team qualifying to participate in the state tournament, all of our spring sports have now qualified for postseason play, which was very unusual, so very few schools or districts are able to be able to make that claim, that all of their spring sports or esports for the whole season makes the playoffs. Other students I'd like to recognize, Amy Johnson, if you were at the softball game last night, you know why she was named Region Three Softball Player of the Year. I know Andrew Jackson probably wishes she was not there last night, because she didn't single-handed, because it was a team effort, but she made a significant impact on us, coming from behind twice to be able to win a playoff game last night. TJ Andrews was named the 2022 Region Three Male Track Athlete of the Year. Drake Summers signed a letter of intent to play baseball at Gardner-Webb, as Cori Merritt signed a letter of intent to play football at York Technical College. Staff honors, Dr. Erin Roberts, as we know, was named the Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year, but she was honored at the State House on April the 28th for her award, and had a chance there for them to honor her in front of the State House. Panther Prowl will be Wednesday, May 18th. Immediately following the Panther Prowl will be the senior signing, where we honor all our future college, military, trade, and apprenticeship commitments. COVID update is great news, as it was last month. We have had one person test positive since back in February, and that's one staff member. Zero students have been quarantined, zero staff members have been quarantined since all the way back into February. As you all know, our community was struck with tragedy with the passing of Officer Drew Barr, but I just want to say how our community has really came together to honor his service and the hero that he is. We had probably 20-something people that voted their time and effort to make sure that the service and the time together here could be, it's just hard to put into words, but they gave it their time to be able to make sure that the service could attempt to honor what he deserved. We never, obviously, we can't, there's no way to show what someone that is, that a hero like that deserves, but again, our people really did the extra mile to be able to make sure that, you know, we did all we could to support the family, and it was very moving to be a part of that. Stephen, can you pull up the construction report?
Okay, I just have a few pictures I want to share with you. A lot has changed in the last three weeks. So if I go back, all right, so this is day one before the first blade of grass was disturbed. It was working fine twice today, so, here we go. Okay, so three weeks ago, this is the point we were at in the front addition. You can see that some of the building pad had been pulled, some walls were starting to go up, but then on the right side, no building pad. So that was three weeks ago, still three weeks ago, and as of today, and this is the progress that has been made in the last three weeks. So you can see walls are going up, the building pad's been completed, and again, they're making significant progress every day. Here's from the other angle, and actually, this picture was taken yesterday, so if you were to go out there right now, you'd see it looks significantly different with additional courses of block that have been laid. Going to the Cape Center, back three weeks ago, you will see that the walls were completed, the walls have been sprayed with insulation. That's what the yellow on the walls is the spray foam that you see. Again, you see there's no metal, there's no roofing materials, no angle iron's been laid yet, or I being, and you'll see the progress that has been made. So you'll see that, if you look at the crane, it's been setting the steel for the roof, some of the roof decking has been placed, and then a couple days later, you see the complete roof decking. You see some of the curving for those white boxes, the curving for the HVAC units that will be placed. You'll see that the brick on this side, on the back side, is almost finished. As you move around, you'll see, again, the brickwork on the front has almost completed. You'll see that there's a ramp, I don't know if you can see it in there or not, but there is a, click, the pointer's not working, but the ramp is being poured to marrow, and then the rest of the steel will be laid on this lower roof, and then that decking will be laid, you know, right after that. And so if you see between the existing building, you see all the brickwork is completed there. Brings us on to our field, just a week ago, this is what it looked like, it was just a So you see there's trees down below the existing Cape building, some equipment coming Again, before construction started, and this week, this is what it looks like. So they pretty much had that leveled, they're pretty close to being ready to turn this over to Wilson Turf to bring in four inches of topsoil to level, to mix in, and then lay the sod on top. So that has moved fairly quickly, a lot of trees, a lot of dirt moved. If you were at the softball game yesterday, you noticed that the road has been shifted over, and there was some gravel placed on it, there's no gravel in this picture, so that they could get back and forth to the softball playoff game yesterday. So that's the progress that's been made in the last three weeks, construction-wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkinson. Takes us to Section 3, our Recognition. 3.1, Lexington School District Three Retirees, Ms. McKenzie Taylor.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow Board of Trustees members. It is indeed a pleasure and one of the joys of my job to be able to stand before you this evening to recognize the 2022 class of retirees. This year, we have 10 individuals who are a part of this class, and collectively, they have given 232 years of service to our district alone. So this just is an incredible testament, not only to their dedication to this line of work, but also to the children of the Batesburg-Leesville community. So without further ado, I do present to you this year's retiree class. We have a small token of our appreciation that we are going to present to them this evening. We have this beautiful clock. This is just one example and one of the gifts that we are going to give them to always remind them of their time here with us, and we will be presenting this to those who are here this evening. Of course, it's a busy time of year, so not everybody could make it, and so I will catch up with those individuals at a later date to make sure that they receive their gifts from us. For the retirees who are here, I do ask that, when I call your name, if you could, please come forward to accept your gift from us. And first, we have Ms. Cheryl Anderson. Ms. Anderson has worked a grand total of 40 years in the field of education, with five of those years being spent here in Lexington Three as an educator. Prior to returning to the classroom at Batesburg-Leesville Middle School, she served Lexington Three for four years as an education consultant with STEM Centers SC. Ms. Anderson has taught 7th grade science and math, as well as 8th grade science and math, and has overseen the robotics club during her time here in our district. She says her most fond memory of her time with us as a teacher was having fun with students in science, engineering things, and exploring hands-on activities. When she was Batesburg-Leesville Middle School's Teacher of the Year, she also enjoyed building and launching rockets that were purchased with a generous donation from her long Chevrolet. Her one piece of advice for future students is to stay curious, have fun in learning, and to concentrate on your goals. Let's give a round of applause to Ms. Cheryl Anderson. Next, we have Coach John Burgess. Coach Burgess has worked a grand total of 46 years in education, with 43 of those spent here in Lexington Three. While with us, he has held positions such as science teacher, PE teacher, ropes course coordinator, and SER program coordinator. He has also coached varsity football, JV football, baseball, track, softball, and C-team baseball, in addition to being a strength coach. He says his most fond memory of his time here is being part of winning sports programs and working with young people. He plans to travel more during his retirement with his wife Cheryl, who we all know as one of our Board of Trustees members, and says his one piece of advice for students is to give learning a chance in order to be successful. So congratulations to Coach Burgess. Next, we have Ms. Andrea Derrick. Ms. Derrick has spent a total of 28 years in the world of education, with half of that time being spent working here in Lexington Three. Ms. Derrick has taught 8th grade math and science, served as a digital learning coach, and is wrapping up her tenure as a 4th grade math, science, and social studies teacher. She is also our current Lexington Three Teacher of the Year, as Dr. Atkinson said earlier. Ms. Derrick's fondest memories of her time spent here focus around the time she spent serving teachers, administrators, and students as a digital learning coach. She says in this position, she had the privilege of supporting fellow educators in so many ways, and learned to appreciate all of the love and dedication that they pour into students on a district-wide level. Her plans for retirement include rocking her soon-to-arrive firstborn grandson, Briggs, serving as a kickstart instructor at Strong Body Fitness, and working as a customer support representative with Get More Math. Her one piece of advice for students is to always remember that they control their own future. She cited a quote from Winston Churchill that says, "Success is not final, failure is not fatal, it is the courage to continue that counts." Let's give a round of applause to Ms. Andrea Derrick. Next up, we have Ms. Penny Height. Ms. Height has worked for 21 years in the world of education and has spent her entire career here in Lexington Three. She has worked as a substitute teacher, special needs assistant, kindergarten assistant, and K-4 assistant. Ms. Height says her fondest memory of her time with us was teaching a child to read in kindergarten. During retirement, she plans to travel throughout the country with her husband and ride her bike. Her one piece of advice for students is to learn all that you can and to never stop learning. Let's thank Ms. Height for her service. Next, we have Ms. Beth Kirkland. Ms. Kirkland is retiring with 40 years of service in the education field. She worked 14 of those years in Aiken County Public Schools and 26 years here in Lexington Three. While with us, she served as the choral director at Batesburg-Leesville Middle School, and as you all know, she has directed a lot of very successful programs during her time here, including one that's happening this upcoming Thursday at 7:00 in the Fine Arts Center, her final performance, so we hope we have lots of attendees for that. She says her fondest memory of her time here is teaching students to achieve the best choral performances possible through their talents and dedication. She also says she loved having the opportunity to teach students who took what they learned in her class to the next level, with several of her students eventually going on to major in music and become teachers. During retirement, she looks forward to being the best nanny possible to her grandchildren and just enjoying life. Her one piece of advice for students is to strive for success and be the best they can be with the talents they are blessed with. She also hopes students always keep a song in their heart. Thank you, Ms. Kirkland, for your service. Next, we have Ms. Rosa Leepart. Ms. Leepart has worked for the past 23 years in Lexington School District Three as a bus driver in our Transportation Department. Her fondest memory of her time here was spending time with different students of all ages who rode her bus. She says she would truly miss all of them and will never forget them. Her plans for retirement are to spend more time with her number-one grandkids and her family that she loves so dearly. Her advice for students is to shoot for the stars. Congratulations to Ms. Rosa Leepart. Next, we are celebrating Mr. Jake McDaniel. Jake has worked for the past 15 years at Batesburg-Leesville Primary School as a custodian, and he is truly dearly loved by all of the staff and the students over there, including my own children, who insist on rolling the window down in the mornings in the car line when he's out there weed-eating and yelling out to Mr. Jake. Jake says the best part about working in Lexington Three, and I'm going to quote exactly what was on his sheet, is, quote, "Working in heaven with all these sweet women." And I do think that Ms. Robyn Swiger may have helped him to fill his sheet out. But in retirement, he says he's looking forward to relaxing and just sitting on his front porch. His one piece of advice for students is quite simple, and it's just one word, behave. Congratulations to Mr. Jake on his retirement. Up next, we are recognizing Ms. Debbie Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell has worked for 26 years in the world of education, with that entire time spent here in Lexington Three as an accountant in the District Finance Department. She says her fondest memories of her time here in the district are the memories she has made with coworkers throughout the years. Her plans for retirement are spending time at the beach, traveling, crafting, and spending time with her grandchildren. Her one piece of advice for students is actually a Bible verse. It's 1 Corinthians, Chapter 16, Verse 14, which reads, "Keep your eyes open, hold tight to your convictions, give it all you've got, be resolute, and love without stopping." Best wishes to Ms. Debbie Mitchell. And this year, we actually have two of our art teachers retiring, the first of which is Ms. Robyn Swiger from Batesburg-Leesville Primary School. Mrs. Swiger has a total of 28 years of service in the field of education, with 26 of those years spent here in our district teaching art. She says her fondest memories at BLPS have happened at lunch with the lifelong friends she has made while working there. She says these individuals have carried her through some really rough times in her life, and that together, they counsel each other, laugh with each other, and share life stories together. In her retirement, she's looking forward to enjoying more time with her family, and her one piece of advice for students is simply to just enjoy school, as these are truly some of the best years of your life. So congratulations to Ms. Swiger. And then finally, we are celebrating Ms. Karen Wheeler, the art teacher at Batesburg-Leesville Elementary School. Ms. Wheeler has 39 years of service in the education world, with 33 of those years spent here in our great district. She says her greatest and fondest memory is seeing former students turn into phenomenal teachers that she gets to work with every single day. In retirement, she is looking forward to traveling and enjoying time at her lake house. Her one piece of advice for students is to be kind, always take risks, and give your best in everything you do. So let's give a round of applause for Ms. Karen Wheeler. So when I was looking up some popular retirement quotes, this one sort of spoke to my heart, because without a doubt, it does apply to every single retiree that we have here in this room, and it reads, "May you be proud of the work you have done, the person you are, and the difference that you have made." And without a doubt, our 10 retirees have certainly made a difference, and they have made a difference in the town of Batesburg-Leesville, in addition to our district, and I'm sure that their impact will be felt for years and years to come. We're grateful for everyone who came out tonight, and we do look forward next week. We are also going to continue to honor them with a special reception here at the district office that we're holding in their honor. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I'd like to reach out to each one of you for the many years of hard work and dedication that you've given to the children of our district. You're truly appreciated. Thank you very much. Takes us to Section 4, our Public Participation. Do we have any cards? No cards today? Next is Section 5, our Action Items. First up is First Reading Approval of Our Budget by Ms. Roden.
Okay, tonight, we will have First Reading of the General Fund Budget. We covered this earlier in our work session, so I'm going to go a little faster and not hit it quite as hard, since you've already heard it several times, actually, from our work session to public hearing. Our first slide is our 135-day attendance report. Over the last 10 years, our enrollment has remained stable. We've grown 54 students over the last 10 years. Our revenues, we are anticipating a $432,000 increase in revenues. That's due to collections being up after our last reassessment and new properties coming on the books. We no longer will see EFA and EIA funding. Well, we will still have EIA funding, but some of them, they're rolling up. The governor's plan is changing from the base student cost. They're doing a per-teacher-child-driven formula, and it gives the districts more flexibility so they can spend the funds where their needs are, since each district is unique. We anticipate having to use 1.9 million of our general fund budget for this budget year. This page shows a breakdown of each revenue category. The negatives are the EFA funding you'll see that's being rolled up into a line called Education Funding General Fund. There's also one called Education Funding EIA, and that's where the academic state aid to districts and teacher salary increase infringe, those items are rolling up. Our next page is what are we spending this $26.5 million on? Last year, our budget was $24.9 million. This year, we built this budget around giving all teachers a $4,000 raise. That raise will be inclusive of the step on their salary schedule, so they'll get a flat $4,000 raise regardless of where they are on the salary schedule. We will, other employees will receive a step plus 2%, except the administrative schedules, those will increase a flat 2%. The personnel additions will be adding 5.5 FTEs to the general fund that were previously picked up, some of them in other, those EIA categories I told you that were being rolled up, to include the alternative education teacher and after-school coordinator. We are adding two mental health positions, which is something you requested after our work session. work session. We are adding a coordinator of early childhood special programs. The high school will gain a .5 FTE for PE, and the technology technician we currently brought in on this fiscal year, but we did not include it in last year's budget, so we're adding it to that line item. The retirement's going to go up 1%. And our health insurance is going to go up 18.1% beginning in January of 2023. They are including some money for this in the allocations. But FICA and workers' comp will adjust accordingly based on the ratios due to the salaries and increase. Other, we're adding property insurance of $10,000 and a welding supplies line of $1,500. To delete from the budget is an activity bus of $125,000. We ordered that bus July 1st of last year. We are anticipating getting it in hand in June. As Dr. Atkinson previously said, it's being painted our school colors right now, so we're excited about that. We're reducing travel, purchase services, and supplies, approximately $25,000, but those are things we can fund through other federal programs and other state and restricted grants. The increase to the general fund budget is $1.6 million, bringing us to $26.5 million for the general fund budget for 2023. This slide shows the ins and outs by function category. The 100 series is face-to-face instruction. 200 series is support. 300 is community activities, and 421 are transfers to other funds. The $100,000 is money we use to help supplement the adult education program. We have a great program over there, but it takes some money at the district level to make it happen. So that brings us to the $26.5 million. The object code, where we're actually spending these, salaries and employee benefits. People cost 86.37 of this $26.5 million. Purchase services, 1.5. Supplies, 1.6. Capital outlays, 162,000. See that reduction because the bus was in that line previously. The other objects are fees and other objects that we pay to, membership fees to SCAS, et cetera, and other membership fees, and then your transfers. Our options to the general fund balance is we can increase millage, or we can use the operational balance. This time, we are recommending that we use $1.9 million of our existing fund balance. During COVID, our fund balance increased approximately 1.7 million, because we were able to shift things to the Easter funds, those buckets of monies, and we weren't actually spending as much because the kids were at home. So, we think we can do this without a millage increase. However, we are eligible to raise millage according to the law. We can go up the CPI figure plus population growth. You can go back and recapture the last three years of any millage you did not levy, plus the current year's allocation. We are eligible to go up 29.41 mills, which would estimate us about $925,000 to offset that 1.9 that we referenced earlier. But at this time, we are not recommending a millage increase. We hope that we can, you know, with collections and stuff, be more on target and not actually have to go into our fund balance that deeply. Our current millage is 263.67. Our current debt service millage is 76.9. But next year, due to the taxpayers approving $65 million bonds, our debt service will go up to 94.8 mills. So at this time, we're not recommending an increase to the general fund budget. And that's what the administration is recommending tonight for first reading. Do you have any questions?
Angela, I do have one question, and I apologize, I did not see this earlier. The decrease in athletics and extracurricular activities of over $78,000.
That's where the bus was in there. It's a people activity bus.
And that too, okay. Okay. So that included the bus.
So we had some stipend increases, salary shifts due to stuff.
Okay, that's fine.
So that's why it did not go down the full 125, but the people activity bus was in there last time.
And we're using 1.9 million from our fund balance to balance this budget. Last year, we budgeted 2.1 million.
Yes, but we did not.
And we did not touch any of it, right?
Well, this year hadn't closed out, but it's looking good for this year.
Right.
We always budget high on expenditures and low on revenues and hope for, you know, we don't.
Good.
We like to have a healthy fund balance. And that will help when we refinance in July for our $65 million bond issue. We'll refinance the $42 million van that we currently have.
Right. Any more questions from Ms. Roden?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we give first reading approval of the proposed 2022-2023 budget as presented by the administration.
I have a motion by Ms. Burgess that we give first reading approval of the proposed 2022-2023 budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Boultonite. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand or say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, Section 5.2, first reading of policy CCA, our Lexington County School District III org chart. Dr. Atkinson?
Steve, will you pull up the PDF of the organizational chart? Thank you. Tonight, I would like to present for your consideration, policy CCA, the organizational chart. If you go back, I also gave you a copy of the most recent organizational chart, which was updated in 2013. So what I have done is tried to create or edit the organizational chart to reflect our current operations, with also a few proposed changes to the structure. And I'll go over the changes now. First of all, I'm asking that we divide Director of Accountability and Adult Education position into two distinct positions, which is how we're operating now. So we'd be a Director of Accountability and Assessment and Director of Adult Education, with one change of moving the Director of Adult Education directly under the superintendent as a direct report. Move the Mentoring Program Coordinator to report to the Chief Academic Officer. That is a change. Add the Fine Arts Center Manager position to reflect current staffing. We've had that position for quite some time, and that position would report directly to the Director of Public Information. Add Graduation and Dropout Coordinator position to reflect our current staffing, and that position will report to the Chief Academic Officer. Add the Coordinator of Early Learning and Parenting Services position that reflects our current staffing, and that position will report to the Chief Academic Officer as well. Retitle the Director of Food Services to Director of Child Nutrition. Retitle the Director of Finance to Chief Financial Officer, and move the Chief Financial Officer to directly report to the superintendent. That is a list of the changes that we are proposing. Any questions that I may ask or answer for you?
I just want to say thank you for taking time to do this and looking at positions and positions changing. We're almost 10 years old with the other one, so it definitely needed updating. So thank you for your work on this.
Well, thank you. This program takes about 10 years to operate, so.
Correct. So do the new medical positions fall under the psychologist bracket there, or would the kind of psychologist handle help counsel?
Yes, it would be, yeah, in there.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve first reading of policy CCA, Lexington County School District III organizational chart as presented by the administration.
I have a motion by Ms. Boultonite that we give first reading approval of policy CCA Lexington County School District III org chart. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Gunner. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand or say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, Section 5.3, first reading approval of policy JH and JH-R. Mr. Sawyer, Ms. Wright? Mr. Sawyer?
Good evening. The policy that the administration brings before you tonight is policy JH, Student Absences and Excuses, and Administrative Rule JHR, Student Absences and Excuses. Both of these policies were in place in April of 1999, so just as the organizational chart may have been a little dated, the terminology on these policies was as well. The revisions to policy JH were needed to clarify language where scheduling terms may change over time. Revisions also allow for any staff member in the school to report any invalid excuses or forged excuses to the administration. The revisions would make an absence lawful if a student is ill, and their attendance would endanger their health or the health of others. With our COVID situation, that would have that type of situation in our policy. Revisions also give building-level principals some flexibility to accommodate individual cases where an emergency not specifically mentioned in policy can be made a lawful absence by the building principal. This language in the policy aligns our policy with state recommendations and practice of districts in the state, that a suspension is not considered a lawful absence for truance. Administrative Rule JH-R also was updated last in April 99. The current policy is not in line with current state recommendations concerning student absences and excuses. The revisions state and define what constitutes a student being considered truant per state regulations. The revisions define the intervention plan framework to be used district-wide to ensure schools and families understand the importance of attendance. The revisions spell out the intervention process from school-level interventions to judicial intervention as well. Administrative rule spells out a process to reduce possible confusion among stakeholders in regards to attendance and excuses. And this policy also allows building-level principals some leeway to give allowance for certain absences, as they deem necessary. And also, it adds in proficiency-based credit, where a student can make up credit, whereas before, the policy didn't allow for that. But that is a recommendation that the state has given us. So with that said, are there any questions? And it's our recommendation, the administration's recommendation, that we get first reading approval tonight.
I'm sorry, I did have one question. I guess as the policy JH, where you mentioned about the COVID shifts and whatnot, revision would accommodate and make an absence lawful if a student is ill and their attendance would endanger the health or health of others. Is there any policy or guideline, or is that going to be part of the building-level administrator as far as actual paper absences from physicians?
Like if it was a COVID situation, is that what you're saying?
Well, not necessarily COVID. So I mean, if they got a stomach bug, and they don't know if it's a virus or not, and they just don't go to the doctor? I mean, is that part of...
It would allow for some leeway at the building level, you know, as they deem fit, would advise their nursing staff.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we give first reading approval of policy JH and JH-R as presented by the administration.
I have a motion by Ms. Burgess that we give first reading approval of policy JH and JH-R, Student Absences and Excuses. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Boultonite. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand or say aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we enter executive session for the discussion of personnel matters. I have a motion by Dr. Gunner that we move into executive session for discussion of personnel matters. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Boultonite. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand or say aye. Motion passes unanimously. We are in executive session.